To order, please rise for the attendance. Excuse me, for the Fledge of Allegiance. Next, I'll read the school committee's statement. "The committee represents the needs of all Leominster Public Schools students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decision upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We have advocated for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Leominster." Next, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Is anybody here that would like to speak for the committee? Please come up, state your name, address. Anybody online? Second time? All right, well, close public comment. Any communications?
There are no communications this evening.
Student report?
So, at Leominster High School last Friday, Best Buddies Prom was held with students from Leominster, Fitchburg, and Gardner. AP testing at the high school is going on this week and next week, starting today. The seniors are down to their last 10 days of classes. The last day of classes for seniors is May 20th with final exams through the 24th. The schedule for graduation events is on the school website. NHS induction is on May 16th at 6:00 PM in the high school auditorium. Math MCAS is on May 21st and May 22nd. This Saturday is the annual Blue Devil Nation 5K Runner Walk being held here at the high school, I think at 9:00 or 9:30. The Mayor's Youth Council is also doing a cleanup that morning, starting at Fallbrook. And then, of course, Senior Prom is on May 18th at the Doubletree in Leominster. And then, in sports, here in Leominster, the baseball team has a nine-game winning streak going on, and flag football remains undefeated. Softball's record is 8-4, recently beating Wachusett 6-5, and is the first team to beat Wachusett in a regular season game in the past three years. Boys volleyball is 7-6 so far this year. Boys tennis is 1-7, while girls tennis is 5-3. Leominster Boys Across isn't well, but Girls Across is 6-4. Thank you.
Not much for the end of the month, but seniors and culinary are currently doing their final projects in their last week with them making a meal within their shop. And other shop kids are doing their last projects, such as the engineering students creating blueprints for their final projects. The AP students are also currently taking their exams. And with last week, about a week and a half ago now, but Junior Prom was largely a success and very popular with students.
Thank you.
The CTEI Awards.
This Thursday. Five o'clock. Five o'clock on Thursday.
Thanks, Marcus. All right, so move on to presentations and discussions. We're going to move up the principal candidate for Skyview up first, so Michelle?
Can we have Ms. Michelle Oliveri? We had an interview committee together and led by Renee Koska. Eileen Griffin was on the committee as well for Principal of Skyview Middle School. And Michelle Oliveri, so she just keeps moving and changing her title, was the standout candidate for this team. And they have brought her forward, and we're hoping through successful negotiations that Michelle will be willing to take on. It's a good-sized school. And but her background, you know, from being a teacher, being an assistant principal, being a dean, she got our virtual school going. She's the .3 principal there, while she's our STEM coordinator across the district as well. So she's well-versed and ready to take it on, is what I hear. She doesn't sleep very much, and you usually see her doing a multitude of things. I think that's what Leominster is famous for. We tell you, your job is one thing, and we say, "And you're going to do this, and this, and this, and this." She actually stepped in at the beginning of the year when we were looking for a principal and an assistant principal. She said to us and volunteered, "Well, you know what? I'll just move my office up there. I can help out. I think you thought it was a week or two. It's a little bit longer, so you have a nice feel." So we will begin our discussions, and hopefully we'll be able to announce. So thank you for joining the team. It's always nice to have a member on there. And Michelle is here for questions, if you want to ask her anything. The excitement is exuding, right?
I do want to say, being part of the interview committee, we had lots of, you know, strong candidates, but you, Michelle, was head and shoulders above everyone and were extremely prepared, very articulate, and there could not be a better choice, so I was happy to recommend you.
Any other questions for Michelle? No? Well, we throw you right in. That's what we do. So we'll be talking, but congratulations, well-deserved.
Thank you. So now we'll move on to the public hearing on the fiscal '25 budget.
Come on, Mel.
Are you going to go on to the school choice you asked?
Jenny, you go. Okay.
There's no floating square there, right?
No.
Yeah, so you guys can hear me well enough?
Yes.
Yeah. Right, so we all know, we have heard this, but we're going to hear it one more time so that the public can hear the budget presentation. Bear with me. Right, Chapter 70, State Aid Distributed to Schools Throughout Massachusetts. Formula aims to ensure that each school district has sufficient resources, provide an adequate education for all of its students. District's budget is determined by multiplying the enrollment numbers times each grade level by demographic characteristics and by a set of educational spending categories, and then adding those $2 values together. Most of us know the budget is driven by student enrollment, but it is also has a local contribution. Portion is the amount that each district has the ability to reasonably contribute based on their local tax revenue to the schools. It's driven by the city's property values and resident income. All right, in total, for fiscal '25, the preliminary increase in net school spending is $4,071,288. $2,311,084 is from Chapter 70 aid. $1,760,204 is from the required district contribution. The House and Senate release and debate their versions of the budget, and then we have a signed version by the beginning of the next school year. Massachusetts continues to address the inequitable gaps for low-income students, English learners, and special education over the years with that Student Opportunity Act. The act is in its fourth year. Over the last few years, the formula has created an influx of resources for Leominster. We see now that the formula is going to start going back down to what I call a normalized increase, which is that $4 million. Been seeing our normal increase, which is usually between that 2.5% to the 4.8%. As mentioned in the previous slide, Chapter 70 is heavily impacted by student enrollment and demographics. Formula is based on the school district enrollment as of October 1st of the prior year. It takes the 13 enrollment categories, you can see price at the top, and demographic groups, preschool, kindergarten, and multiplies each by a cost rate in 11 different spending categories that are on the left-hand side. Administration, people services, that type of cost. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education computes foundation enrollment using student-specific data submitted by each school through the PIMS or Student Information Management System. District-wide enrollment was down by 11 students from fiscal '24 to '25 as of October 1st. We are back over that and more at this point in time. Fiscal '25 general fund budget will be supplemented by several other funding resources that are available. We have revolving accounts that support specific programs or services, such as the Circuit Breaker, which is used to supplement special education tuition. We have school choice, which offsets the cost of students who attend from other districts. That's listed in the revenue slash revolving. This line includes the estimated revenues for fiscal '25 and the revenue that we've been able to carry forward from fiscal '24. There are also reoccurring federal and state grants, funding through DESI to support the goal of the need district. The district was also given one-time federal funding. This was provided through the school district to address the impact of COVID and is available through September of the fiscal year '25, so that's September 2024. The district received $11,193,495 in SRE3. Back in fiscal '22, the funds will be, they're expected to be fully expended in the next fiscal year. The SRE3 funding has been critical in addressing a lot of unprecedented challenges. SRE2, we saw a lot of, we addressed a lot of the health and safety protocols and projects such as the security cameras, cleaning equipment, updating in HVAC units, equipment, and mainly supporting students' academic, social, emotional, and mental health. You can see in this slide that other areas of SRE3, which we are still continuing, fund through September 30th. We broke down the fiscal '25 general fund budget request into seven pieces. The budget process begins by first determining what the district's contractual and fixed costs are: wages and salaries, benefits, special education tuitions, indirect charges, repair and maintenance, technology. We'll start with the largest expenditure to the district: wages and salaries and benefits, which together account for 78% of our budget. For fiscal '25, wages and salaries make up 63% of the school's general fund budget. Projected salaries include contractual increases, like the cost of living increases, step increases, lane increases, longevity stipends, and extracurricular stipends. We include what's called currently posted positions, which are essential positions that have not been filled in fiscal '24 and therefore need to be carried into fiscal '25. The projected wages and salaries also include new positions necessary based on projected enrollment, class size, and student need. For fiscal '25, the district is requesting a total of 906.3 FTEs, or full-time equivalents, equalling $65,036,011. For fiscal '25, the district is requesting the following FTEs in the general fund: posted positions or carry-forward positions of 5.3 FTEs that were posted in fiscal '24 but are not filled. These positions equal $285,731. The district is also requesting an additional 16.3 FTEs for fiscal '25, equaling $1,068,615. In addition, the general fund will be absorbing 6.2 FTEs from the SRE grant, 1.8 FTEs from the Title I grant, for a total of $684,692. These positions for the general fund will total 29.5 FTEs, or $2,039,038, and will address the growing areas of student need. There were also needs to increase the following lines in the budget. We've got summer nursing. We've got extracurricular stipends, substitutes, and coaches. The total increase to those lines is $147,500, for a total increase to the general fund salary of $4,902,447. Beyond the general fund, the district will be using revolving funds to hire two vocational teachers for the business and the plumbing programs. Special education. No benefits, excuse me, wrong one. Benefits and fixed charges make up 15% of the budget. The numbers include benefits such as health insurance, dental insurance, life for both active and retired employees, as well as their beneficiaries. You can see, historically, the increase in cost can be anywhere from 0% to 10%. We try to budget based on a historical average with input from the city comptroller. The increase is not always due to an increase in the cost of insurance. Member participation has steadily grown over the years. For fiscal '25, we are increasing the benefits and fixed charges line by 9.3%, or $1,326,224. This is based on enrollment, steady growth in membership, and new positions. Special education, here we are. Can fluctuate greatly from year to year depending on the individual student's service needs, how many students may move into the district with service needs, and how many students age out. The increase in rates for the out-of-district placements is determined by the state. Fiscal '24 Massachusetts was approved a 14% increase in rates. So as you can see, that had a huge impact on our budget, and we're projected by the end of fiscal '24 to have a total increase of 20.9% in tuition costs. It's crazy. Yeah, in the last 14 years, the rate increase has ranged from 2% to 14%. So for fiscal '25, we're projecting a 9.2% increase of the general fund budget. This equates to $758,323, but we are also able to carry forward one year's worth of Circuit Breaker to help offset, which is $2.6 million. Indirect charges are the expenses that are incurred by the city for the benefit of the schools. This includes costs such as administration, retirement expense, DPW, school resource officers, and state assessments for school choice, spending tuitions, and charter schools. On an annual basis, the city comptroller provides the school with an agreement followed by a summary, sheet, and supplemental details of calculations for these expenses. For fiscal '25, total indirect charges are estimated to be $6,413,256. Leominster Public Schools constantly works to improve our technology infrastructure. Our technology department continues to provide efficient and accessible technology for all students and staff district-wide. In addition to providing accessible and updated technology, we have prioritized the efficiency and security of our district's network through the fiber project. Costs associated with these overall improvements include hardware, software upgrades, Wi-Fi networks, device management systems, and technical support staff. For fiscal '25, the 2% increase in the instructional technology budget will cover the cost to maintain our current technical initiatives while providing funding for overall network improvements and staffing related to the upgraded upgrades. Utilities, the district strives to provide a safe and accessible education to the community. The utility repair and maintenance budget provides funding to assure, ensure healthy environment for all LPS staff and students. For fiscal '25, utilities, repair, and maintenance costs account for 5% of the budget, or $5,210,979. We've seen an increase in costs for regular utilities, such as gas and electricity, like everyone in their homes. The 5.5% increase to our utilities, repair and maintenance budget represents costs for ongoing maintenance projects, maintenance costs, and the district's security initiatives. Our all other, the remaining 3% of the budget proposed is $2,681,024. It's used to pay essential expenses that directly affect students in the classroom. One example is our, of course, our budget for payroll is in there. So we want to make sure we fund that and get everybody paid on time. The cost ensures the accurate and timely delivery of compensation for our wonderful efforts of our staff. These services, all of these services on here are required to aid students to achieve their educational goals. Some of the challenges we've had in hiring, we've had some increase in our third-party medical therapeutic services, to the tune of over $1 million this year, so we are being thoughtful about that next year when we do the budget. Leominster Public Schools is requesting $65,036,011 in wages and salaries, $32,221,023 in expenses, and $6,413,256 in indirect charges for a total fiscal '25 net school spending budget of $103,670,289. Thank you for your support for students of Leominster. And we can open it up for questions.
May also add that we will take on the fees that we did this year. We will not be charging for transportation, school supplies, athletics. We are going to maintain that for FY '25.
And just mention clubs.
Clubs, all of it, yes. AP.
Ronnie, any questions?
Yeah, I mean.
I'm the devil. I always have dirty words. I worry, I worry. I worry because I worry about the sustainability.
Correct. So it's a year-to-year, so we have not taken those policies away. We've just suspended them each year. So we are looking to suspend it for FY '25, those fee structures, but we have not just thrown that away. FY '26 could be a different year.
But we must have an idea of what
each one of those costs.
Right, exactly, so we know what we need to have. If we want to be able to waive fees, if we have to reduce. That data from when we're collecting fees.
Right, prior to COVID, we collected fees for all of these things. And frankly, the busing fee that we charge people really rarely made a dent.
$50,000.
Into the cost. And, you know, AP, as I say, AP exams depends on how many students are taking AP classes. And previously, parents were responsible for coming up with, you know, the funding. The same with athletics, there was a fee that was associated, you know, and there was a discount for more siblings, things like that.
Quite a bit of money.
I was going to ask Matt to put you on this, but you know what that total is for the fee?
Well, I can tell you for our transportation, it was like $80,000, $30,000.
Right.
When you have a transportation expense of $5.8 million.
That's not even the gas.
They only pay the gas.
One bus for gas. So for the other ones, I don't have it at the tip of my tongue, but it wasn't a lot.
Right, stuff set some of the stipends, but it certainly was not paying for them.
Correct.
And our stipends go up over $300,000, so it wasn't coming anywhere near to cover them.
There are grants somewhere there that would.
We don't need it at this time. Maybe for FY '26, but let's just get through FY '25. Yeah, we write grants all the time. Yep. Thank you, Ronnie.
I think it would be helpful to Ronnie's point, if we had some sort of idea of what that expenditure would be so that we could keep that on our radar.
Yeah. That would be good information for the finance team.
That's a good question, Ron.
Back question, Ron.
Good question.
I don't want anyone to be accused of having a heads-up in the fly.
As long as we can keep fees free, I'm all for it.
Yeah.
Well, nothing is ever free.
No, for the kids.
For the families.
Families and children.
And we're going to review it every year.
Mel monitors that. She does it quarterly, so yeah, don't worry about, she can come back with reports. Thank you.
You said there were 16.3 additional full-time employees for this year? In addition to the 29 and a half that we carried over? So that's what I heard.
A lot of numbers. Throw out at you. This is the breakdown of it, sorry.
Where's 16.3?
A total for fiscal '25 of 29.5, and that 16 is included in there.
Oh, okay, so it's so it was then 13 that carried over from last year? Plus the six. Okay, so.
I thought I had it on here. I apologize.
Our attendance, but our total number of students is kind of safe lab. Where are we going to be putting those? Where are we investing those 16 headcounts? Departments?
Yeah.
Yeah.
List in the budget book.
Yeah, it's under tab two.
I will rehash it then.
Okay, it's all broken down in there, but you can see it down by school and position.
And it's all people who are directly working with children. It's a teacher, it's a parent, it's a nurse, it's things like that. So it's under tab two.
Good. Okay, it's all ahead.
I don't have any. Thank you for all your work on it. We feel very confident bringing this forward to City Council in June, so we're just requiring a vote this evening.
I hope there's public comment on the budget for fiscal year '25. Online, anybody? Is anyone hearing online?
Yeah, I just have to unmute the chat. One second here.
Almighty. Any questions online or in person? One more time? We'll close that, I guess.
Just one more second, Sal, sorry.
Oh, sorry, no worries. We good?
No, we want to keep that one up. Those are the numbers they have to vote on.
Thank you. Was there anybody online that would like to make a comment on the fiscal '25 budget? One more time? All right, we'll close it and ask for the vote now.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the budget. And do I need to go line by line here?
Those three numbers. Yeah, I think it's just the salaries.
Kyle, can you put that slide back up? I need those numbers. That last slide you had, I need the numbers. Bo. One more, Kyle. Nope, one more. Keep going. Keep going. Right there.
There we go, right there, right there. Don't go anywhere.
Right, so that would be $65,000. Yeah, $65,036,11 cents under wages and salaries. Expenses would be $32,210,23. And the indirect would be the $6,413,256. This is why I'm not on the finance committee.
Finance.
103.
But I second.
For a total of $103,670,289.
Second. Who seconded?
Ronnie.
All in favor? All right. Fiscal '25.
Thank you.
That's passed.
Thank you.
City Council.
We'll come back to finance after. No, no, it's usually June. Jenny?
Yep, so the next presentation will be on the school choice for fiscal year '25.
Jenny is the keeper of everything school choice. Every year, we have to bring this before you, our vote. Every year, we have to bring this before you for a vote.
Hi Jenny, sorry, we can't hear you.
Is this better?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we're just asking for a motion for you to approve school choice. Nothing's changed in the guidelines, other than the dates. We're still looking at class sizes and keeping them relatively small as possible, particularly for our, our younger ones.
So you kind of answered one of, one of the questions, which is about class size and what the guideline is right now. I'm really concerned. So we're getting, and we're hearing, and our kids are in the schools. We're hearing, especially at the elementary school level, about overcrowding. We can say 20 kids, but then in November, December, if we get four or five more in-school district kids that come in, and we're struggling to hire staff, and we don't have the space. I am concerned about our classroom overcrowding. Personally, I would want to limit school choice at our elementary schools to a much stronger policy. And maybe with some exceptions for siblings or existing kids in district. But without having a real cap at a number, I'm worried at saying 20, and then we have enrollment in November, December, January, we're over a number, and we don't have the staff for them in a building that's already, buildings that are already crowded.
Isn't there a cap in the cap?
Yes, there's a cap in the guidance.
Right.
You still think it's low enough? Is that what?
Say there's, say our goal is 25 kids, and we say we're going to cap it at 20, but now in November, December, January, five, six, seven more kids enroll, as we know happens over the school year. Our classes are now overcrowded, and, you know, we don't have the staffing or the space for them, and we're seeing that in our kids, especially at a couple, a couple of schools right now.
Certain grades. So, yeah, I say historically, right, I was going to say historically, and part of our policy is, is that there are certain grades that might have so many students that we're not accepting it in that grade or in that school. So we do balance that out and, you know, make a concerted effort. And regardless, we can never project if a family's going to move in in, you know, January with six kids. But we also have kids leaving the school district as well, so there is.
Very fluid.
A very, like, fluid process.
And if you look at our total enrollment, our total enrollment isn't out of control.
Yet, as much as the subpopulations, certain classrooms, but really.
Can't discriminate against populations.
I'm, I'm not discriminating, that's why I'm saying I think we need to put a freeze on the whole thing right now.
I guess I would not be in favor of that.
No, and I understand it, but I'm saying how do we limit at 20 in May, especially in kindergarten? And then we start off at 22, because we get the kids that enroll at the last minute, and now we're in the school year, and we can't hire more teachers, and the numbers, they're increasing.
That's why it can be, it's tricky. It's very tricky, and so we're looking at this all the time. So we'll do our first rolling admissions for school choice in June. So that way, those folks that are in Leominster or are looking to start in kindergarten, you know, initially outside of Leominster, then they know exactly where they're at. But really, over the summer, it's, we're very thoughtful, and we have to be, and mindful, and I'm in touch with the principals all the time in regards to their class sizes, and if they know of somebody moving in. I mean, I can, I could tell you right now that there will be grades already closed now for next year, because there are so, there are more students in there than we would want, so.
And we work with our principals too, like, over the summer, if we see, you, we're going to have bubble grades. We get a bubble here, there, and it, it just happens. We start looking at scheduling, we start moving staff. Look what we did with Northwest. We took grade two out of there. They had a real bubble in their grade four this year, but we kept them closed to school choice. But even then, their grade four got very large quickly. So we put additional staff there. So it's about being flexible with the resources. I think we talk about school choice almost every day, almost every day.
You know, what I've heard is, is around Northwest, so the fact that we didn't have, we had closed out the school choice doesn't seem to be a factor there, but.
Yeah, we didn't open, but they weren't open at all this year.
Once we accept someone for school choice, are we responsible?
Yes.
For the, we can't like, all right, you're done.
Yeah, no.
See you later.
No, no.
It's African.
That's their school.
Yeah. If you're not opening it up to anybody, then it's not really excluding everybody and not setting.
I think I could be wrong, but I think she's saying to limit it so that we could be accommodating more on the other end.
But my point is, yes, you may try to limit, but you know what? Last time I checked, this is.
Right, so for people who are residents of Leominster, we cannot, we have to accept every person who's a resident. And for school choice. Now, but that's not, we're not obligated to do that by law, and we can open it up to school choice or not. And we have a policy that we accept school choice. However, there's certain guidelines around the availability in those grades, that school, and that class. So we don't go beyond that.
Right.
Got what you're saying.
So enrollment has been steady and stable. It's just, like I said, we do get the bubbles, right? And then we have to address the need based, and put the resources where they need to go at that time.
Um, that's, it's a public hearing, we have to open up to the public, so. Again, Kyle, if you want to unmute, let me know when you're ready. Thank you. Yeah, is there anybody in person or online that would like to make any comments about the school choice of fiscal '25? Please speak up. One more time, one more call. Anybody else that'd like to make a comment about the school choice for fiscal '25? Please speak. One final time? All right, and we'll close this out. And we'll take a vote to approve school choice for fiscal year '25, 2025.
I make a motion to approve school choice for fiscal '25?
All in favor? Be opposed? Uh, motion passed.
Thank you, Jenny. Keep watching those numbers for us. And the good news is, really, fewer and fewer of our students are leaving our district. That's, that's the celebration in this. For so many years, we had more students leaving than coming. That doesn't happen anymore in Leominster. Our, our citizens want to stay here. Very proud of that.
Very positive.
All right, move on to vote on caps. So go ahead, Melissa.
So, um, last meeting, I discussed briefly that caps provide some of the special ed services, a nonprofit in the area. It's made up of a number of local public school programs, and Air Shirley is going to be joining the caps program as part of the approval process. Every member district has to sign off on approval and have a vote by the school committee. The preamble is here only because, as part of this, Dussie made a, some policy updates and changes just due to legal language, as they were going through it anyway, but there's nothing of significant material difference. This is really just about adding Air Shirley to the program, which is great, because it often helps with the cost of tuition for all of our kids. So we're looking for a motion to approve having Air Shirley join the caps program, and then we need it to be signed off by the chair.
So would you like to make that motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the caps approval of Air Shirley and the amended policy, an included policy guide as attached.
A second? Josh, second? All in fair? Be opposed? All right, pass. Next, we'll talk about the superintendent search update.
Sure. Yep, so the three candidates have come to Leominster School System and toured and had open forums. We have a site visit tomorrow at one of the, for one of the candidates, and the other two is still being, I think, in the process of being scheduled. I haven't heard of. Oh, you went to one already? Oh, did you? Okay, I didn't realize that. So we've done two, so we're still waiting for one more?
I'm going tomorrow, tomorrow as well.
Yeah, aren't you going to the same ones? Oh, two different ones?
Put up.
Oh, okay. All right, so after tomorrow, we'll have done all the, our site visits. And then we have the 15th, oh, no, the 14th, Tuesday, the 14th is our interview day. Um, which we will be interviewing all three candidates and making a decision that night.
Any questions?
Just for, uh, it's executive session or public?
Public.
The interview.
Making a decision the same night?
Yes.
And that's going to be here? I mean, at five?
Yeah, at five o'clock.
I have questions? All right, we'll go on to approval of the minutes for April 1st, 2024. Any changes, spelling mistakes, mission? I get it.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
All in favor? Subcommittee, uh, policy?
Um, we have not met, we meet.
Finance?
Melanie, can you come up, please? Yep, transfers.
Okay. Warrant 39 totaling $126,309.34. Warrant 34, $257,745.96. Warrant 41, $337,523.44. Warrant 42, $730,000, $730,640, $670.84.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. They go, yeah.
And then there's.
Uh, motion to approve. Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, I gotta do my warrants.
Going out of, out of, uh,
the warrants, uh, warrant 39 totaling $375,983.16. Warrant 40, $2,607,878.75. $1,032,024.54. I'm sorry, wait a minute. Step back there.
Yep.
Warrant 41. Eileen, you did bad. Warrant 41, $1,032,024.54. Warrant 42, $6,655,457.41.
You thought Brandon had it easy.
I was.
I was just gonna.
Way better. I'm just going to call him up.
All right, uh, motion to approve the warrants. Second, one second. All in favor?
Transfers?
Okay. First transfer is requesting to transfer $535,000 from salaries, Dussie Code 2305 to the general fund expense, Dussie Code 5200.
Second it.
All in fair?
And transfer request number two, requesting to transfer $400,000 from salaries, Dussie Code 2210, 2320, and Dussie Code 2800 to general fund expenses, Dussie Code 4220.
Make a motion to approve the transfer. Transfer two.
Second.
All in fair? Go on to the action items, obsolete equipment.
We found more.
Motion to, you have to explain.
Yes, yes. Yeah, no, no. Bob says we need to get rid of them.
Did they still do those two tables?
Yes, please.
Motion to approve, uh, of the obsolete equipment? All in favor?
Just down to five E, a gift.
The acceptance of the gift.
Um, for our HVAC, we have a donation of $3,816 worth of copper fittings and material.
Awesome. I so moved to accept that gift.
Second? Second, one second. All in fair? Sandy, do you, now you had, you accept the gift? Okay.
Oh, yes, she likes gifts.
All right. That's all right, you just got it. I just wanted to make sure you had the opportunity. Oh, we're good, all right. Uh, so we will accept the gift for. All right, any new or old business?
Yes, I have two things, and probably the person who can answer doesn't hear. So Christine, if we can put it, you know, on agenda, I wanted an update on the progress of the field behind the high school, so we can know what's happening there. And then I also wanted an update on the request for the school committee compensation and where that stands.
If I may, Sal? I just want to give a huge shout out. It's teacher and nurses appreciationally.
Yes.
So for everything they do, and our nurses, they take care of the staff and students. So just thank you to everybody. If, if you can, just a quick thank you goes a long way. Everybody's working really hard and doing a great job, so I'm proud of our staff.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other new or old business?
Sandy, could you put your mic on, please?
Oh, okay.
There you go.
Okay, fine, good. All right, I've received multiple phone calls from our parents regarding an incident that happened at the high school and safety concerns.
So I would say you can address those to me, and I will answer those.
All right, last week.
Yes. Yes.
Are there, are the people who are, all right, the resource officers, are they visible? It's one of the questions.
So what I'm going to ask that you do is send that to me first, and so send me the questions so that I can make sure I come back with adequate answers, and then we'll share that out.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good, thank you.
I make a motion to go into executive session under chapter 39 to discuss contract negotiations.
We will, we will not be coming.
We will not be returning.
This is a voice vote, so Ronnie?
Yep, yay.
Yay?
Yay.
Yeah, I'm a yay.
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 All right, thank you all. Thank you all, teachers.
Tyler, just a question, when did you start as a school nurse person?